Call of any order, would you please say and salute the flag?
To the flag. Of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Individual.
Individual.
Oh, well.
I didn't, I didn't. I, I saw where. Lisbon.
Libby, yeah, she resent them too with the correction. So.
So I didn't get, I didn't get bothered for some reason, look at it.
Well, I, I can, did you look at it after she sent the revision?
I have not seen the revised minutes.
Yeah, so she sent it today at three twenty-six, so. And she did make the change because I had. I answered her that it was Amaro and then told her I was okay with how she worded that about the cruiser. And. I think everything else, I mean. With the revision adding there, so.
I read the revised version.
So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of January twelfth.
Second.
So. There's a motion by Chris, second by Kent. And to prove the minutes of the last meeting, January twelfth, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. And, and, and Libby made some suggestions about. That she liked me doing that.
Yes.
And. That, oh, if we. If we name people when they speak.
Like, yeah, public comment, people and. Introduce themselves to Libby and so she'll know because.
She can't see you when you're standing back there.
See you when you're standing back there and you know, she is a newbie to Monmouth, so. She might not know Hugh Lamasta by sight like the rest of us do, so.
Oh, she will.
And, and to help her out, my, my spelling names.
Should we have a person come up here?
Yeah, maybe just so that if they're speaking, come up to the dot, you know, or the X on the floor so that people.
That's no good, all you see is the back of people's head.
Or, but if they introduce themselves, she'll know.
In my opinion, just introducing yourself is sufficient.
Yep.
And so. And what about introducing the, the other culprits here? Department heads.
Yeah. And I think she can see that, you know, or she knows who the department heads are here somehow. She did know that, I think, last time. So.
I think, you know, Mr. Chair, I think it makes sense, just as a point of order of the meeting, in case. You know, someone new to Monmouth is tuning in for the first time, that they get a sense of who's who, just because. You know, everyone gets introduced, they might not know that Harold is Harold Jones, the select person. You know.
The illustrious.
The illustrious Harold Jones. So, so, you know, in the, in the legislature, they ask everyone what their name is and, and, and where they are from. And you can answer that question any way that you want. And that might even, you know, might even make sense for the select board people to say, you know, at the beginning of the meeting. Here's who I am and I live on Route one thirty-five, that kind of thing. Just in case we've got. People who are fairly new to Monmouth. You know, watching for the first time.
So, Department, Department of Forestry next and. Dan, you want to go?
Certainly, Dan Dunn, Public Works Director.
Yeah.
I have nothing of. High importance, it just, things are going along as goes as they can in the winter for the Public Works Department. Continue to fight unexpected breakdowns. It's just not been our year, continues to not be. We will be. Hundred percent ready for this impending storm, equipment wise and personnel wise. Pray nothing breaks. And as a little interesting fact, yesterday's snowstorm. Or storm was the first all-snow event that we've had this year. No ice, no sleet, no rain, no freezing rain, all snow. It was a much welcome change.
I don't think that was true in our area, but so.
Otherwise, that it will have anything of high importance. Any questions?
Any, any questions? No, okay. Oh. Paul.
Okay. I'm not. Paul Furon. Monmouth Police Department, okay. We had a meeting last Monday night by Department, Public Works and Police Department. Kind of like a department head meeting, just kind of troubleshoot a bunch of different issues. Talking about the radio issue and. Digressed into an hour-long meeting with a bunch of other issues coming up, and I think. The general consensus is we're probably going to do that. Not monthly, maybe every other month. Just because it was good to, to work together and get feedback with each other and what, how we can help improve. Services to the town by working together a little more closely, and I think it was very productive. Sunday, we had a funeral, we had, Police, Police Department went to Ryan Sherman's father passed away. Ryan is a reserve officer from Monmouth. We went to this, yeah, it's been ten years. Went to his father's funeral on Saturday. And good show. Show up there and support into this. The other issue is the cruiser issue that we're dealing with right now. It's come down that, that we aren't authorized to purchase a new one, so. We're out there looking for used cruisers right now. The state does not have any. They're in a shortage right now, they're trying to get new ones online and. They don't have anything available, so we went out. Surfing to see what we could find. We found two, ones in Thompson. It's a two thousand sixteen SUV, it's got a hundred and twenty-three thousand, and they want twelve four four. The other one we found was in Sharon, Massachusetts, two thousand seventeen SUV, with forty-eight thousand, they want sixteen nine ninety-five for. To me, that, that. Seems like the better deal, you're getting one with low mileage. My only concern is going to Massachusetts and looking it over because. Why is it on the, why is it on the lot with forty-eight thousand miles is what comes to mind first, but. That seems like the, the, the better option to go, go after at this point.
Now, I would have real concerns about that one, just because the, the, first of all, the low miles are probably really hard miles. And that, that just. It's very low miles to be on the lot without some kind of.
And that's what, that's what the red flag is going up in the back of my mind.
And you got one down here in Thompson you can look at. I would suggest that you go look at that, and if you rule it out, something you don't like about it, something doesn't. Check out, then you say, okay, I'm, you know, I've been out in Massachusetts, look this one over, that would, that would be my thought.
Yep. The only other issue I had, wanted to bring up is the storm coming up on Saturday, just want to encourage people to. Slow down, pay attention and stay in if they don't need to go out.
So my question is, is, is if you find something acceptable, is that, is this a viable alternative? So our problem is, is we don't have authorization from town meeting. To buy another car, so I can't take out a loan, I can't borrow anything, all. We, we have the insurance money which we could use, but we don't have, he doesn't have enough in his budget to, to eat the other twenty thousand out of his operating budget, so we don't have a way. To make a one-year purchase on something like that, so because we would need to lease it or lease, purchase or borrow. The board doesn't have the authority to do that without town meeting authorization, so that's kind of where we're stuck. So the alternative to get one. The other side of that is even if, even if we get authorization in July, as you know, there's no cars on Charlie's lots, there's no cars anywhere. So even if we place an order on July one, he may be waiting for five, six months before, before this new one shows up. Could be next December, by the time we actually have it. In our possession, so the idea was to maybe get something as an interim. Solution, and then you could maybe use it as a reserve backup vehicle, once we purchase the new one.
Or trade it in. Right, because you're gonna have, you're gonna have, you're gonna have enough assurance, insurance money to. Pay for the, you, either one of those used vehicles just outright.
That's correct.
Which is perfectly fine, and then. And then you can, you know, look at trading it in against a new vehicle, or. If you need a spare, then it's paid for.
And that would be my recommendation, in case we have another situation like this, you've got something to fall back on.
But I know you were just talking about that one in China, so I know that they can't do anything until they have their town meeting, but is that something that? We could.
Yeah, she's gonna email with me with all the information on it tomorrow, what it is, what it's got for equipment in it.
Yeah, figure out a way to. Work something out. What's that?
Have them loan it to us.
Well, that, or I mean, I mean.
They can't do that without.
Exactly, yeah, but I mean, but if there's a way to figure out, to come to an agreement, I mean, obviously, they'd like to sell it before June, but if we had an agreement that. Once they can sell it in June, if we. We can buy it, if it's something that you think that you want and it fits, fits the bill, so.
And it. They acquired it through a, a grant from the Stevens King Foundation. All equipped, the only thing is, you know, I'd have to go look at it because I have no idea what it's got for equipment in it, if it's all equipped. And you can pick it up for. Twenty, twenty-five thousand, I mean. That seems like a no-brainer.
Yeah, yeah.
How many miles are on the?
She said she thought it was, it was only seventeen thousand, but she wasn't a hundred percent sure. She was going, it's a two thousand seventeen. And I thought that sounded real low for a two thousand seventeen cruiser, but it was just used around the. China, so who knows? She was gonna check and send me an email tomorrow on the specifications of it.
I see. Justin, do you need an official motion on this, or just can we go by consensus of the board?
It just depends if you want, whatever he's gonna buy to come back to you before we purchase it, or whether you want to just authorize. You know, Paul, to make a decision on what he thinks is the best vehicle.
I think. What?
Yeah.
I have no issue with, as long as we don't overspend the insurance money, then I have no issue with trusting his judgment.
Okay, so then a motion would be helpful, because it's more than I can spend without your permission.
Okay, I make a motion that we authorize the chief to use up to the insurance proceeds. To purchase a replacement vehicle.
Second. So there's a motion by Kent, second by Harold to allow Chief Furland to. Decide on what he'll use for a replacement cruiser. I think. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief.
Yeah, good evening. Anarid Fire Chief. The past two weeks, been relatively quiet, we've only responded to about five calls and all pretty minor incidents. At one vehicle crash on Main Street, rest were very minor incidents. Last Thursday, we conducted our BLS training, that's Bureau of Labor Standards, and we had, it was a virtual training via Google meets, I believe. Similar to Zoom, and we had forty people in attendance, which is really great for our department, for a training session. Usually, we average about twenty-five to thirty max. But being a mandatory train, we end up with forty. We do have a roster of forty-eight members, so we have several that we just need to. Get the link to so that they can get that training completed, but I was pretty proud to see forty people sign up for that. We did that because our meeting room is very small and we're really limited to, to about thirty people in that room. You get more than that, we're just. We're all crowded, elbows to elbows, with the pandemic still ongoing. I chose to, to do that training virtually. This past Saturday, the fire department had the pleasure of doing a gender reveal. This was kind of a fun thing to do. It was one of our firefighters and his spouse who is on our auxiliary, and they're relatively new to town, moved up here recently and. It was pretty exciting to spray colored water from our hoses and the pond over at Stevens Electric is now blue, so I don't think it gives you any idea. Who the baby is, it's gonna be a little boy, so it was pretty fun, just something, something to share and. Get to do here in town and. Do with our members. It's fun to do something outside of just responding to calls and bad stuff, you know, so, kind of like balloon rescue, you get to have fun every once in a while being a firefighter. We're gonna be hosting an ice skating party this year, we didn't do one last year because of the pandemic, but we are on schedule to do one this year. And that's gonna be on Sunday, February twentieth, three to seven P M. I'll let you guys out snowmobiling that weekend, of course.
No.
There'll be food, music, bonfire, and. We'll probably start prepping that rink in the coming weeks. We usually try to do it within a couple of weeks, three to seven.
Where's it gonna be, Dan?
Out on Cockawong Lake, right off the beach. Similar to past, a few years past, I think this will be our third time doing it.
It's been a big hit in the past.
It, it is, yeah, yeah, we had a couple hundred, two to three hundred people in the past. Ice skate, it, it's always a big hit, people come out, just the camaraderie, and we, we bring out portable lights to light up the parking lot and, and the rink and. Nice bonfire, which is, you know, turns to ash and greens the grass in the future, so fertilizes it. And just, just fun times, we've had some really good feedback on it. In fact, some people would like us to just maintain a rink year-round. A lot of work, especially on a rough surface, we don't have Zanbonis, we're drilling holes in the ice, using sub pumps to pump the water. Flood it at night when it's like twenty below zero out, it's, it's a lot of work.
Yeah, give the ice fish metal.
Yes, yes, please, if anybody's listening, don't ice fish on the ice rink, thank you.
You know, there's gonna be one person that makes.
The last thing I have is in regards to the demo of the school here next door. The fire department is still interested in doing some last-minute training before the final demo, so if there's a contact that you guys can share with me, whether that be. Was it Almighty, that received the contract to do the demo, I don't know if it's gonna be that person, or if it's the architect that's overseeing that project. But whoever the point of contact is, if you can hook me up with them, we'd like to just do some exterior training, we know we can't go inside because of the health reasons, but. Certainly, we'd love to make Swiss cheese out of the roof and, and pop out some windows and do what we call ventilation and rooftop operations. In like weeks, just prior to the actual demo, so, you know, I think they were scheduled to start doing stuff like March, April.
They're gonna, they're gonna, there's forty-five days of asbestos removal, starting in mid to late March, and then after that, they'll start the demo after that.
Okay. Just keep me in the loop. That's all I got, if anybody has any questions for the fire department. Thank you.
I'm glad you chose to not start a forest fire with the gender reveal.
I only have one thing, Doug, I just wanted to mention for the. The tax credit thing, the property tax credit, there were nine people, forty-five hundred dollars this year.
Next, our select board reports. Anything?
I've got one thing. The Department of Transportation just announced their work plan for the next couple of years. And. And so you can go into their website and take a look town by town, exactly what their spending priorities are going to be over the course of this year and next year. Apparently, they've. They're starting to get a flow of some of the infrastructure money. From the federal government and, and that's coming through the main DOT and down to the town level at this point. And one of the items that I noted that was added to their work plan. Was spending one point five million dollars on the Wagon Bridge. And that's scheduled for the next year or two. My guess is that's probably not a widening of that bridge, which. Is certainly called for as my, as far as I'm concerned, but. I would be guessing, again, I'm not the engineer here, but I'd be guessing that they're probably looking at. Resurfacing, you know, taking the, 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 the surface of the bridge and probably the joists underneath the bridge. The, the steel girders and, and replacing those.
We can find that out. But not one. Someone, someone can contact DOT, either Dan or yourself can contact DOT and ask them what their plans are, if it includes a widening.
Yep. You should, for that much money?
I, I wouldn't think so, but they. We could find out easily enough.
Yeah. Sure.
And we could, we could express an interest in what it would take to get them to do it. Although, you know, I'm sure what they're gonna tell us is that they'd have to increase the footings. In order to accommodate a widening of that bridge. And as soon as you get into, you know, working with around water. And putting in coffer dams to pour concrete and that kind of stuff, things get super expensive real fast, so. It wouldn't surprise me if they simply say, no, we're gonna reuse the existing footings, but we can at least. You know. Run it up the flagpole and, yeah, run it up the flagpole and see if it flies.
I wanted to ask.
The, I know the bridge, the Five Bridges Bridge. It was done a few years ago, was a million dollars. And that's a full-size. Bridge and everything, whatever is there.
Doug, did they do?
Yeah, they, they. They improved the box cover that, that's there, and as I recall, and widened it. So one point five million to me sounds like they're gonna do some widening, because to replace. You know, I think it's three steel beams under that bridge. And not do anything with the footings and then just overlay the concrete and pavement, doesn't sound like one point five on the face of it, but we asked them, they'll let us know. Help us what, you know, what they plan on doing.
Sure. Well, let's see, let's see what happens, and you know, I think if you ask some of the folks in that neighborhood what they'd want to see, certainly widening is one of them. And, and certainly like they, like they did on the Five Bridges. Replacement project many years ago. I think the neighbors would also say if we can. Bring that bridge elevation up. A couple of feet. So that you can at least get a canoe underneath the bridge without having to get out of the water, that would be something.
Yeah. Good, thank you. Okay. So next, our public comments. The public people are. Somebody. So the next thing on the agenda is to adopt. A donation to the Monmouth Fire Department for their assistance with the Rutgers firefighter cancer and assessment and prevention study. And it was five hundred dollars, I believe.
Yes.
We need a motion.
I make a motion to accept the donation to the fire department from the Rutgers firefighter. Cancer and assessment and prevention study.
Second. So there's a motion by Chris, second by Harold, to accept the donation for the fire department from the. Let cancer study, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Chair.
Yes.
Question on that, when I receive the funds, turn it over to the town to put in our training budget, is that appropriate? So. Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
I got, maybe, probably comment. From the first, one of the first subjects we discussed with chief. Our police chief, Roland. Folly known to me as Five-O. Is there any way, are we stuck with this hand tying when, whenever there's a vehicle, I mean, this, this has nothing to do with someone going off the road in a municipality that. These will be total, it's an unfortunate incident, but it happens. Is there ordinance to be, is MMA that's got our inside? Can we change something for the future so that we could go out and, and our town manager wouldn't have authorization or our board of selectmen? To get a vehicle without having to go to a whole town vote, or it just seems like something that's fairly predictable, it's gonna happen to so many municipalities over here, they could lose a fire truck. A police cruiser, ambulance, something.
The, the issue here is that, is that the legislative body of any. Either a town, it's the voters of the town, a city, it's the city council, of course, for the state, it's legislatures. It's only the legislative body that can improve appropriations, so unless there was a, an. A. An account set up. And an emergency account that was funded, that authorized that type of spending, there's nothing that can be done, so that would be the only thing that could be done is to, to set up a.
Contingency.
Right, and it's like we, like we have done before with accounts to set aside money to buy a fire truck or a piece of public works equipment. You set up that account, then you fund that account through appropriations and then use the money when it's there to use.
Yeah, the major difference is if you have, if you have a reserve fund account, those are created by the town meeting, so they define what that can be used for, so they would say, the article would say. Does the town want to appropriate a hundred thousand dollars to a vehicle reserve? Then that, with that, then the selectmen have the authority, because the town has already said that can be used for vehicles. So then they would be able to vote to take money out of that without a town meeting, but without a, without a setup fund like that, or without having a town council. You really are tied to the town meeting authorizing those.
Town council, former government could have offered that sort of activity.
Yes.
Just, it's unfortunate because I certainly trust these folks to make such a decision, but I appreciate the explanation, thank you very much.
The only other option, if you were in a critical situation, would be to call a special town meeting, and it wouldn't have to be a, a. Ballot town meeting, you call a, a special in-person town meeting to decide an issue like that, if it was critically important to do that.
Thank you. Like the town garage burning down the lolly equipment?
Yeah.
No, no. It can happen to DOT, but not us thinking of the trucks.
It didn't even happen to them, it happened to the turbine.
Yeah, but I think it happened in Arista County too, they lost like, I don't know, yeah, it happened in Arista County within the same week or so of losing those in Litchfield, so. So is that something that maybe? We should ever entertain looking at, adding that reserve account, is that something you ever think you'd want to entertain doing or, or not?
I think that's a good concept to talk about in a future budgeting process. I mean, cause once we get into the budgeting process and we see how it's gonna go, and we see maybe that we, we're, we're gonna be in a really good position. Appropriation-wise, then we could look at, you know, can we set aside some money without impacting the, the tax rate? I, I think if we can do that, it's, it's, it's a very worthy thing to consider.
I'd, I'd also add that. It sounds like the chief's plan, at least for the police department. It sounds like the chief's plan of, you know, holding on to this cruiser as a reserve one, if we. You know, get to the town meeting and authorize a replacement, a new replacement one in the next fiscal year. That might solve part of the problem that Hugh has pointed out to us.
Okay. Next is to consider renaming Kalua Bay Drive to Linwood Drive. I, I.
What's, what's driving, what's driving that?
The people who maybe who live on it, I guess. But I, I thought there was only one residence on.
There is.
So does it need a name?
What, is it E nine one one issue?
It's only one, doesn't need a name. It can, it can use Beach as an address. Cause then it's a driveway.
It used to be.
But there was two, there was three, there was a, a trailer, there was the little red house.
Exactly.
And there's no chance that. That could change.
He'd have to sell.
All right, I have no objection.
So what, what would you like to do? Rename it or?
Is that the request, is that the request of the property owner?
Consider renaming it to Linwood Drive.
Well, I'm, I'll make a motion, we rename it to Linwood Drive.
I'll second that.
So. There's a motion by Harold, a second by Chris to name or rename Klowa Bay Drive to Linwood Drive. All those in favor? Thank you. And. Ken voted, yes.
Yes, he's muted. You've muted yourself. He's got a red slash across his.
And then the next thing is to. Consider naming a road, West Lake Drive. And I don't know where that is.
I know where that is. It's off of. It's a new road off of Route one thirty-five. One of my neighbors, Merk Durnley. Has done a, a minor subdivision and someone purchased the property from the family. So now there are two homes on that road. It was previously unnamed. And so I would like to make a motion to name that road West Lake Drive.
I'll second that.
So there's a motion by Ken, second by Chris to rename or to name.
Before we actually move to a vote, I just have a question to ask the fire chief. If there's any conflict with any other road names in the town.
That's what David just asked. I don't, I don't believe we have any other west.
Okay.
So. Then motion by Ken, second by Chris to name West Lake Drive, West Lake Drive. All of the favor. Thank you.
Hi.
And next is wire number fourteen. What you have over there? Oh, yes.
Maybe by reading while you're doing your signing. Bluework Earthworks, Solid Waste Trips, two thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars, Durigo Wireless. Radio for the police chief's cruiser, fifteen hundred dollars, fielding oil and propane, heating oil, two thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars. Rimmel Industries Bulk Waste, two thousand four hundred and thirty-nine dollars. May Municipal Entropy's employees' health trust, employee health insurance, seventeen thousand ninety-one dollars and ninety-two cents. New England Salt Company, bulk salt for Public Works, three thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. Northeast Energy Apparatus LLC, this is tests on the fire engines, three thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Northeast Emergency.
Oh, sorry, I'm emergency, reading it too fast. Pine Tree Engineering, Beach Maple North Main Sidewalk Engineering Work, fifty, five thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. Pro tow auto transport, cruiser towing from the accident, one thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. Traction heavy duty parts, twenty-two Dymn Air Hydraulic. Do you have a better explanation for that? I'm assuming it's you.
Uh, yeah, large truck jack.
Okay, one thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Treasurer State of Maine. All for motor vehicles, two thousand twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents, one thousand six hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. And Winter Police Department, Police Chief Services, two thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars.
We approve the warrant.
I'll second.
First motion by Harold, second by Chris to approve warrant number fourteen. All those in favor?
Hi.
Yep. Next is an executive session pursuant to. One MS, MRSA, number four oh five. Six A personnel and undertake any result, take resulting action. And this is to. Point to. Members of the new economic development committee. And we've had five applicants.
I put this down as an, as, as an executive session, but if you don't want it to be, you can just waive that and you can just, you can do it in an open session. That's up to you.
Okay, I would prefer we do the interview in an executive session and then make the appointment in an open session.
Yep, that's, that was my thought.
You're gonna come back, you're gonna come back before you adjourn?
Just to vote on the.
So we could stick around.
Would you like to, do you want the applicant in here one at a time, I suppose? If you're gonna do executive session. You gotta vote first.
I move we go into executive session.
Motion to go into executive session, by Chris and a second by Harold. All those in favor?
Hi.
Who, who would you like to?